I like to do just a quick roll call of trustees, if you don't mind, I think we're all here, but I won't. This is a historic event for us, I'm concerned. So let's, let's take a roll call. Trustee King.
Present.
Trustee Saldivar.
Present.
Trustee Maria.
Present.
Trustee vote.
Present.
Trustee Bursard.
Present.
Trustee Sullivan.
Present.
Trustee Wilson.
I'm here.
Trustee Pierce.
Present.
We're all here. I'm glad to hear it. Chancellor has the notice of this meeting been posted?
Yeah, it was posted in accordance with the law.
Okay. Do we have our guiding principles? Ah, good. I want to, I want to bring up our guiding principles. You know, for me, you know, we need to hold these principles high and let them guide us on our journey in selecting a new chancellor. This is the most important thing we're going to do, certainly as our term and our terms on this board, no matter how many terms we serve. But probably in the history of this college, because I think we're, this college system, we're, we're in a precedence of change and precipice has changed. And we, we have to have the right leadership. To me, these principles are attributes of honor and integrity. Principles that require courage to act. John Kennedy wrote in his book Profiles in Courage, the courage is grace under pressure. May we treat each other with grace? And find the courage on our path forward. Hold these, these principles high and let them guide us in, in the selection process that we are undertaking. Okay. Um, thank you. Public comments? Any public comments?
No, sir, we did not have anyone signed up.
Chancellor, any introductions you'd like to make, sir, or anyone?
Yes, Cassandra Jenkins from Community Impact. She's, there she is right there. Yeah, thank you. You're welcome. Anybody else? Desiree? No? Okay.
All right. Workshop, do we have any, we've been workshop to death. Is there any more workshops?
No.
No, we're works. Thank you. So we'll, we'll go for the approvals of the minutes of the May 4th, 2023 workshop and regular meeting. Do I have a motion to approve those minutes?
I have a point of information, please. This trustee Wilson.
Trustee Wilson, go ahead.
Um, I just wanted to know, did everybody get the revised minutes? Desiree, I'm not for sure if you, um, if you got to send out or not.
No, ma'am, we did not send out a revision.
Okay, so, um, you need to let everybody know that the meeting notes can be revised.
We need a second, Mr. Chair, before we can discuss a revision.
So I'm tired. We have a second now. Trustee Maria, a second. So the, the issue at hand is we need a revised minutes, right? Are we approving the revised minutes then? So we can't approve it, right?
You can approve it with a revision if there's a revision proposed.
Okay.
Trustee Wilson has a revision. She can state that for the record and use minutes with the revision.
So trustee Wilson, do you have the revision?
I do, but I, I just thought it would be, um, you know, for everybody to get the revised, revised. So with no like, hey, what happened to the meeting or hey, how come it's only one copy, one person had it? So I just wanted to make sure everybody was in the same thing.
Advisory to council, we can go ahead and approve these with the revision. Go ahead.
If, if there is a revision or correction to the minutes, we would just need to state that for the record and then the board can vote on, approve the minutes with the revision included. We just need to be clear about what the revision is.
So do we need the revision now?
Yes, and I thi- I think I may have missed and trustee Wilson may have said it, but I didn't hear it. Is, is she proposing a correction to the minutes as they've been posted?
Or a clarification, trustee Wilson, are you?
Yes, they, I got, I, I have the revised. It was sent to me earlier. What, Desiree, when did you send it? It was sent sometime, what?
Yes, ma'am, I sent you a copy to review. I did not get any feedback from you, so I did not send it to the board.
I, I emailed you back and said, okay, you said you, you will get it sent to the board.
Okay, I apologize. I did not see that email. So we just need to.
I just want to make sure everything is open. You know what I'm saying?
Right.
Like, everybody is on the same page, everybody.
We just need to clarify for the minutes of the meeting what the revision was. So maybe Desiree can provide that information.
And you, you have a statement of the revisions?
Yes, so the statement of the revision, um, the trustee had asked that in exchange between she and trustee Sullivan be included in the minutes for the, um, I don't remember what item it was. If you'll give me one second, I can look it up.
Okay. Take your second.
It's when I asked the question why to Jennifer, my, why we were changing the topic.
Got it. We, we just need to read it into.
Is that part that? Okay, I, I thought maybe I was trying to figure out which one, which part.
Since we don't have the revision, we need to read it to the record so we can approve it.
And Desiree, if it's helpful, we, we don't need to read the exact minutes. If, if the, if the revision is or the correction to the minutes is just to include some discussion, I think that's sufficient. Okay, thank you. Um, it's a, it's a lengthy passage. It was just including the exchange between trustee Wilson and trustee Sullivan. In reference to a question that was asked to Jennifer at the last meeting about a budget item.
Okay, so what we're asking the board to do is to approve the minutes with that revision to be included. Okay, so all those in favor of including, of approving the minutes with the revision, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed?
I'm going to abstain.
Guys, trustee Sullivan abstains. All right. That passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Special reports announcement. Chancellor, do you have anything, sir?
Yeah, a couple of things. One is we recognize ninety seven hundred, nine thousand seven hundred and eight graduates at for graduation across the system. That included two hundred and nine bachelor's degrees. So we have one of the largest graduating classes in the entire state, and that will be one of our performance outcomes of the new, of the new budget model. We also have had a number of CE and GED graduations at the colleges. We've had one at Kingwood and one at Montgomery. We've got others scheduled. We'll make sure we get those on your list. If you've not been to one of those, I, I, I really enjoy them. You, you get to see a different, a different milestone for different, different groups of people. It's really, usually you have more families there and it means a lot to them when they get one of those CE degrees or the GED. We have, uh, we're getting more funding from the state for technical training and the workforce piece of it. We're still, we have a, it's coming through the corporate college, but we're working hard with TWC, Texas Workforce Commission. I've mentioned this before, but I think in terms of the state efficiencies and the way you ought to be giving out grants, they are the, they are the, they set the example for the rest of the state. They give grants, they have outcomes. If you don't meet the outcomes, you don't get additional grants. It's not, it's not complicated. We've got some updates from Sci Fair. We've got two Sci Lake students from the College Academy that earn full ride scholarships, one to Stanford and one to the University of Notre Dame. And then another one of Sci Fair's adult students earned a full ride to Princeton. So we've got students going all over the place. So we've got a lot of, I think, a lot of positive across the system. And I mentioned this earlier, but right now the summer enrollments are up nine percent. Six out of our eight locations are, campuses are up the nine percent for the summer. So that looks really good. It's still early and then the fall we're up twelve percent. And I know it's early. I think we're ninety days ahead prior to where we registered, but all I could think about in my comparison is when we were in COVID. And this time, a couple of years ago, we were down thirty and thirty-five and forty percent. So I, I don't look backwards, but I, when I look at these numbers, I think twelve percent is really good. And I just think we're moving in the right direction. So we'll be ready for it, whether we're we're up twelve or six or five or whatever the number might be. So that's it.
All right, sir. Any comments from the faculty senate, running chats?
No.
What I've, what I've done in my request is I've added to our agenda under the faculty senate as a standing item, we have other employee groups. You know, that's interesting. You know, this, this board is interesting, interested in hearing from the employees and staff, this college system. For those of you who qualify as a college group, and I use that somewhat loosely, contact Desiree Barbasco and she will counsel you as to the, how should I say, the constraints of being able to come before this board. I also want to say, and I say this really, you know, not antagonistically, that if you, don't come bringing us a problem. If you're going to bring us a problem, then you best bring us a solution because we're not going to solve your problem. But we do want to hear from them, the employees out there as to how things are going. Who, you're on, you're on the battlefield each day and you're out there doing, doing what you should be doing. And it's just good to hear, you know, that, that soldier perspective. And I don't mean that in any condescending way, and that's important. The people out there doing the work. So with that, I just want to recognize that. And we have one, one group who's been with us a while and that's the AFT. John Bergduff is the president of the AFT, Dr. Bergduff. I think you're up. And while Dr. Bergduff is coming up, you know, I'm going to be biased here. The AFT has been here for forty-three years. I was a founding member of the AFT. Its intent has always been good and the good for, for everyone. At times it's been a battle, but it's no longer that way. And, and I met with, I guess, over a hundred of your folks probably two, three weeks ago. And, you know, they're, they're instructors, they're faculty senate presidents, they're, you know, the staff. And they are concerned about what happens in their lives and their lives here at Lone Star. And, and it's all in a good way. I mean, we're not the AFT of New York or Illinois or California. I mean, these are the, the people who want to have a better life and a better working environment. And they, they made their choices as they've made their choices, as we all do. So John, I welcome you in a little bit different capacity and willing to hear your message. And from the board members, you can now ask questions, Dr. Bergduff. And that would be okay. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much and good evening. I am Dr. John Bergduff and I'm the president of the American Federation of Teachers here at Lone Star College at the moment. And I want to start tonight by thanking the board of trustees for revamping your agenda to create this new slot for employee groups like the union to speak to you. It has been an honor to speak on behalf of AFT members and Lone Star employees in general during the public comment portion of your meetings for a very long time. I gave my first speech to this board body at the September meeting in two thousand and eleven. Since then, I have spoken to this board nearly every month and you and your predecessors have graciously listened to me give in, in the neighborhood of a hundred and twenty speeches. I have taken this responsibility very seriously. I hope I have shared information that has helped you to understand the concerns and priorities of the many faculty and staff who served Lone Star College so faithfully. And I definitely hope that I have always come to you, not just with problems, but with proposed solutions as well. As Chairman Stoma said, we as employees give so much of ourselves every day to help our students to achieve their dreams and we care deeply about the college. By placing me and others who speak on behalf of employee organizations on the agenda, as Chairman Stoma said, you have given yourselves the right, under the Texas Open Meetings Act, to comment and ask us questions if you so wish. I, for one, would be happy to answer any questions you have for me. And you are more than welcome to challenge me as hard as you, as you like, if you disagree with something that I say. It will be nice not to worry about the green, yellow and red lights. Although I must say that they have taught me the fine art of delivering the most information possible in the shortest amount of time. For that, I am grateful and I pledge to you that I will remain respectful of your time and efficient with my speech. Tonight, I also want to acknowledge, as others will soon be doing, that this is the final board of trustees meeting with our chancellor, Dr. Steve Head at the DACE. I made some comments in a meeting earlier this spring, but this is the last formal opportunity I have to acknowledge your thirty-nine years of faithful service to Lone Star College. As I've said before, I will always be eternally grateful to you on a personal level for hiring me and giving me the opportunity to teach at this great college. In the most recent edition of our union's newsletter, The Advocate, Steve Davis, history professor at Kingwood, who has known you even longer than I have, wrote a very thoughtful tribute to you. He wrote about you with far better words than I could think of. So I would like to close my speech tonight by reading what Professor Davis wrote. And I quote, "I have known Steve for nearly forty years and I will always consider him my friend." Perhaps a century from now, some historian will do a ranking of LSC chancellors as Arthur Schlesinger famously started doing with US presidents in nineteen forty-eight. Over that course of time, who will be judged the greats, the near greats, the mediocrities and the outright failures? I am utterly confident that Steve Head's tenure as our leader will always earn him a spot in the top rank. It has been a consequential term of service and one in which he has been a very effective helmsman. Three things come quickly to mind for which he should be applauded. First, he exemplifies the best of progressive southerners of a certain generation in his outspoken contempt for racism. Second, one of his enduring messages is his insistence that all LSC employees be treated with respect, whatever their credentials or type of service to the institution. And finally, he must always be lauded for his commitment to maintaining jobs through the pandemic at a time when so many Americans suffered loss of livelihood. End of quote. And I could not agree more with these words that were written. Thank you, Steve. All of us at Lone Star College wish you all the best in your future adventures and we hope to see you from time to time at graduations, penning ceremonies.
Thank you, John. Thank you. If I were here, I'd make sure that red light, green light. I was wondering why they didn't come on to begin with. So, but no, thank you very much. I, I had not seen that article, by the way. So I, I just couldn't do these things. We can't do these things without everybody in this room and the board all working together. It's been a, it's been a, I mean, yeah, we've had some challenges. I'd, I'd like to think going forward, you could still agree to disagree sometime and still talk with each other. I, I, which is basically what we've done. We don't have to agree on everything, but it's not a personal issue. So I, I appreciate on the other side, by the way, your approach. It has makes life a lot easier. Most of us have fundamental agreements over the way people ought to be treated and the way the system ought to be operating. We, we do. We're not that far apart ever. So thank you. I'll send Steve a note. The last time he sent me a note, he was in Portugal and I was in Ireland a couple of weeks ago. He was talking to me about the Astros and I, every time we go out of town, the Astros start winning. When we're here, then they, they lose. But I appreciate your comments. And I didn't make a mistake hiring you, by the way. So, but thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Bergduff. You bet. Board members, do you have any reports from board, board members? Anyone?
This trustee Wilson.
Go ahead, trustee Wilson.
Um, I was just going to say that I attended the CE and GED graduation from Montgomery. Um, and I conferred the degrees and they were very, very excited to have a trustee there. So, um, and, and it was, it was awesome to see all the students that actually, um, completed everything. And, um, I just, I'm just, it just to give advice that they, whatever campus you're invited to, it would, it would be a great thing for a trustee to go because they were truly appreciative that I showed up.
Yes, sir. Yeah, just two, two quick comments. We got related to graduations. I attended the Lone Star College Kingwood graduation ceremonies, M.O. Campbell Arena and also the Lone Star College Kingwood CE graduation at the Kingwood Campus. Dr. Head, as you said, the CE graduation is very personal. It's very close and the joy and satisfaction that you see in the, in the eyes of those students is very real.
So you were also at the bachelor's degree.
Yes, sir. Yeah, I forgot that. You're right. Very much. Thank you.
Any other? Trustee Maria?
Yes, and also I wanted to report it on, on graduations, commencements. And as always, it's, it's really thrill. It's really touching. You know, it never gets old. You know, and, and being, I started out with Dr. Leonard, and I I was just joking with you about how the weather was, was haunting us, was, was scaring us, right, for a little bit. I says, I didn't have to go to church because I prayed so much. While I was out in the field, there was an outdoor event at the Tom Ball Football Stadium, right? And it's just seeing the faces of young people, the families. Also, Dr. Gonzalez, and he mentioned it over at M.O. Campbell. It's just incredibly touching to see the families come together cheering so loud for their, their, their family member. And, and concluded with Houston North was Dr. Dr. Wright. It's an amazing event as well. It was just, the mayor was with us all the time. He stayed there, Mayor Turner. And we had a lot of nice conversations, a lot of interaction with, with the, with the families and students. It's truly magical. That's all I can say. Thank you.
May I?
Yes, yes, good. All right.
I just want to say that for, obviously we're talking about commencement ceremony. So I attended the one at UP and the online commencement ceremony. And both of them were really, really nice. It's, to be honest with you, it's always nice to be involved in some way in those commencement ceremonies because what I like the best is when you see the students walk the stage, you just see their smiles in their faces. And then some students were crying. And so that made me cry because I'm just, I'm a crybaby. So when I see that, I just cry. And it sort of reminds you, you know, as trustees, that stuff that you do here does impact our students. And so, um, you know, it's, it gives another perspective. And so we, I just want to say thank you to everyone in the team for UP and Lone Star College because you guys always do really, really good commencement ceremonies. Yeah.
Trustee King.
I, I had the pleasure of attending three ceremonies as well, Montgomery, North Harris and, and Kingwood. And I would just echo everything that has been said so far. The only difference was I didn't cry. So.
Well, I gotta say, I, I went to the big show out at Sci Fair. And that was a big show. It was over twelve hundred graduates. And it always amazes me. I think we were over five hundred dual credit. I mean, those, those folks just amazed me. I'm, I just, I'm awed by that, that accomplishment. I wish I'd have, I'd have had that back when in my day. But it was, it was, it's the vibe. I really appreciate the invite. And let me tell you, I, I should get an award for endurance to stand up there for all twelve hundred of them and shake her bumper hand. I'm telling you. But it was good and it's, it's, it's just excellently, excellent organization execution. And your staff is to be commended out there for, for the work done as everywhere in the district because it takes a lot of planning and execution to bring one of these things off. Trustee Bursard?
I attended, I attended my first, I guess, at Montgomery and I had a little part and I really appreciate that. Uh, I guess there were about five hundred and Jim and I did stand for the whole thing and I wasn't expecting that. But it was lovely, wonderful ceremony and commencement and I thoroughly enjoyed it. I also want to say thank you to Lone Star. I attended, my grandson, who graduated last night from Willis High School. Uh, I attended a senior awards ceremony about a week and a half ago for the scholarships that Willis High School gave to their seniors. And there were many.
Um, I'm sorry, I'm not own. I apologize. Uh, there were many Lone Star College scholarships given that night. It made me very proud as a trustee. So thank you, Lone Star College.
Yep. Any other comments by board members?
I also attended UP and Tom Ball. And I've attended many, many graduations over the years. And I got in the, in the habit of as, as they were walking across the stage and I could see them between the people that they had to pass through to get to us down the line shaking their hands. And a lot of things came, came to mind to me. First of all, it's pretty funny that they, you know, they're so excited that they, that they've come around, you know, behind the rest of the people seated and, and then they come up in this whole line and they, and they, they've been looking at the stage. And it just surprises me. They get, uh, they get their, their diploma and then they come, come to us and we were there to shake their hands and they've got the, 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 the little portfolio thing for the, for their degree there. And they don't know which hand to put it in at first. They, they, they'd forgotten what we're up there for and they're a little nervous, little nerve. I sometimes take it away from them. I'll take this for you. I always gave it back to them, but some, some of them got a little upset. But I, 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 over the years, I've, I've watched a lot of feet under those gowns walking across. And I have to say, I am, I was impressed. I would, I, I noticed that there was a market difference in the quality of the footwear. And I think that goes to show that it's come to mean a great deal more as the years go by. These students are, well, I get, they're getting a fantastic education and they understand that and are excited about it. Have learned new things and have a great future to step into from, from Lone Star. And Steve, you've been a, you've been a good, a good leader here. Thank you. That's all.
Okay, I, I would like trustee Pierce. The, I went to North Harris and Houston North graduations. And the thing that stood out to me more than anything was the amount of early college graduates, which they received a high school diploma along with an associate's degree and also workforce certifications. I have to admit, that is the, the most to me, uh, most important and most impressive, uh, uh, thing, you know, thing that I've seen. And I have to give it to Lone Star, you know, it's, uh, uh, we need to stay on the cutting edge of, uh, of what's out there. Like I said, the, the biggest jobs are going to be in healthcare, infrastructure and energy. of, uh, of what's out there. Like I said, the, the biggest jobs are going to be in healthcare, infrastructure, and energy. And I think, you know, we're doing good. I mean, early college, um, if we keep doing what we do, and, you know, we're gonna knock it out of the park. Very, very impressive. And also workforce certifications. That was very impressive to me. And, and I think that, uh, we're doing a great job. It was good to see those students, adults. You know, you saw a lot of non-traditional students. That was great to see, too, uh, even a grandparent walk across the stage with a certification. So very impressed with that. Lone Star, you know, uh, uh, we coming along.
Right. Any other comments by board members? All right, let's go on to our committee reports. Uh, do we have our, our calendar for, for our trustee search? I mean, I'm sorry. Our, our chancellor search. Uh, trustee Kane, would you like to give a, a brief update on where we are?
Be delighted. Uh, we had a meeting on, uh, May the eighteenth, talk about, um, the, the search in general, but specifically the, the start taking a look at a contract for, uh, the new chancellor. And I really appreciate the work that, uh, trustees Pierce and, uh, Saldivar and Marillo did with me along with, um, Ms. Mahalik and, and, uh, Ms. Mott. Um, we got a lot done. Uh, it's still a work in progress. Obviously, we still have some time to finalize things. We'll be talking more about that. But it was, it was a good meeting, and, um, we're, we're making progress.
Good. I just want to call attention to the timeline. July is gonna be a very busy month for us, colleagues. It's gonna be a hugely busy month. We'll probably have to have one or two, maybe more, special sessions in there. But we, we're, there's no vacation here. I mean, we, we're gonna have to do our due diligence and do our jobs. So I just want to make everyone aware, if you're planned on taking vacation in, in July, maybe it's not the time. Uh, because we need to, we need to focus and, and see this through. Okay?
Trustee Sullivan, would you like to give a report on your, uh, policy committee, please?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Appreciate it. Um, the audit and finance committee's been very active. We had a meeting to review the, um, RFPs, RFQs from external auditors. And I'd like to thank Dr. Kane and trustee Stonema for joining me at that meeting, which was the entire afternoon. And that's not a complaint. It is a, uh, a statement of the thoroughness with which we approached our work. So Jennifer, good work on your part and your team's part in pulling everyone together and giving us the information that we needed. We spent about forty-five minutes to an hour with each prospective, um, vendor. There is an agenda item tonight to address that. So I do want to thank y'all for, uh, assisting as well. And item number, that'll be item number twenty. Item number twenty-five is the item that we discussed earlier with respect to the home stay exemption during the budget workshop. And once again, trustees, um, Stonema and Kane have been instrumental in making sure that discussion was thorough and has resulted in a good recommendation to come to the board. So we've been busy, but doing good work. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. And thank, uh, the members of your committee, trustee, uh, Broussard and Kane for being expeditious. And, and in fact, I've just handed a couple of more, uh, policies to, uh, trustee Sullivan tonight for you guys to consider. So I appreciate your diligence and getting these done. Um, I would like to appoint us another ad hoc policy committee. You know, in our, in our state legislature's infinite wisdom, and I do mean that facetiously. Uh, Senate Bill seventeen apparently has passed both houses, is waiting to govern. He may have signed the thing already. I don't know. But this prohibits DEIA practices and institutions of higher learning. I know the chancellor has been proactive in this. Him and Calicia Wright certainly have a game plan, uh, to kind of rename and keep going. But I think this is so important that the board needs to consider policy implications based on this change in the law. So in that, in that regards, in that scope, uh, I've asked, uh, trustee Wilson to chair a committee made up of trustee Pierce and trustee Maria to take a look at this law or this lack of law, whatever you want to call it, uh, versus our, our policies, uh, and make any recommendations to the board regarding any policy changes needed to assure that we maintain equity as we go forward in all aspects of this, of this college. Uh, and I, I feel strongly about this. You don't, don't get me on the soapbox. Um, there is just no point. And, and, you know, it's like we, they want us to go back and live in the eighteen hundreds. We're not gonna do that here. So with that committee, I charge you, go forth and, and study the, the situation, come back. I'd ask you to report on it at each board meeting, your, your progress, your approach. Uh, let us know where you're standing, where you're going. And, uh, you know, if there, you need any assistance, let us know. Certainly, uh, chancellor, I'm gonna volunteer Kalicia Wright to counsel these folks if needed. And also, uh, uh, Melissa, our, our board council, as well as, uh, council, uh, Estio. And, and see what you come up with. All right, all right, folks? Trustee Wilson, you, you accept that child, challenge? I guess you nodded your head. I'll say yeah.
Yeah, I'm sorry. My signal is back.
Okay, all right. Then we're off. We're off and going on now. Um, now we're going to the consent agenda. There are twenty-nine items on the consent agenda tonight. We're gonna pull number one for discussion. We're gonna pull number twenty-six and twenty-seven for discussion. Twenty-seven will be discussed in our closed session. So let you know. Does any other consent agenda items need to be pulled for discussion? Trustee Sullivan?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Could I pull twenty just to make a comment?
Twenty, you say, sir?
Yes, sir.
You certainly may.
Thank you.
Any others? Going once, going twice? Okay. Then, may I have a motion to approve consent agenda items two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-eight, and twenty-nine. They have a, a motion to approve. So moved. Do you have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Uh, Chair, uh, this is, okay, the trustee Pierce abstains. You were getting ready to say that. I'm sorry. I interrupted.
Okay, trustee Pierce abstains. At the record show. The, the motion passes. Those items pass. We'll first consider agenda item one. I need a motion to consider the item. Can I, please get a motion to consider the item? Got a second?
Second.
Okay. Let me give you some background here, because this is, this is gonna be a little complex. Uh, this is a change in, in board policy, the governance policy, uh, regarding really the, the PRCs. As, um, the, the proposed, the, the proposed, uh, policy is, and, and the consent agenda is that we would change the PRC to a permanent, a permanent committee. Uh, we, I want to amend that to keep it as an ad hoc committee for the same reason, you know, that I've done, done this tonight. So I can have multiple committees to address multiple issues and, and have the best people serve on those committees off of this board. That engages everyone on the board who wants to be involved and should be involved, because we, we're all diverse and we have different expertises, expertise. So that's the purpose. So we're gonna do an amendment, first amendment, uh, to change, to change the, uh, what's being proposed from a permanent committee to ad hoc committee. And we'll have to have a vote on that. Right? So that's the first thing we're gonna do. Let's do the first thing, then we'll do the second thing, if you don't mind.
If that's a motion, I'll second it.
And so procedurally, we'll need a motion and then a second. And if, so I can be clear for the minutes, that first, uh, amendment is on page sixty-nine of the agenda materials. It is section one E one oh four of the, um, policy document that's attached to the agenda materials. And it would remove the change that moves the policy review committee to a standing committee, which would revert, so it would revert back to an ad hoc committee.
Okay.
Melissa, can the chair make that motion?
I think the chair is requesting a motion.
All right, let me, let me finish.
Somebody other.
When, give me, give me a minute, because I'm going slow for myself, as well as everybody else, so, so confusion. Uh, so I need a motion for the first amendment. I'm gonna read the first amendment. First, the revisions would change the policy review committee from an ad hoc committee to a standing committee. I, I previously stated that it was my intention that the committee have rotating memberships. And for that to happen, it would have to remain an ad hoc committee. If others are in agreement, then I'm gonna ask for you to vote for it. So I need, uh, a motion to approve this amendment. Yeah, I need a motion. I need a second.
Second.
All, all those in favor of the amendment signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Then the item amendment passes. We'll go to the second amendment. The second amendment relates to the conduct of committee meetings. The board previously amended its policies to require that committee meetings be conducted in accordance with the requirements of the open, Texas Open Meetings Act. This is strictly voluntarily. The Open Meetings Act does not require that committees without the authority to, to take the final action, conduct meetings in this manner. If you remember when we had this debate a couple of years ago and we went to this, the intent was to increase transparency of our committees to ensure that, you know, we're open in what we do and all that we do, which we still, still should be. The issues have arisen where, uh, it's really become a burden on the committees. One, to be able to schedule trustees and, and accordance with the notices we have to give the Open Meetings Act, uh, according to the Open Meetings Act. And also, it's a, it is an extra duty for the, the staff to prepare for these open meetings. So, you know, and the results, really, we look at our records, we have not had that much. In fact, we've had very little public participation in these meetings. So the purpose, initial purpose has proven to be, you know, a fallacy. I mean, it didn't happen the way we thought it was gonna happen. And let me just say, that's the way I am. You try something new, if it doesn't work, we'll try something else. Uh, so what we, we're gonna do is we're gonna have a vote on the second amendment. And essentially, the second amendment states that, uh, that committee meetings, uh, do not, po- policy review committee meetings no longer have to be, or any meeting for that matter, has to be, committee meeting has to be a public meeting. Does everybody understand what we're voting on?
Motion.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
If I could clarify for the record, what, what language? So when, uh, in the agenda materials, this is also on page sixty-nine, there is a paragraph in that same section. It is section one E one oh four that adopts the requirements of the Open Meetings Act for committee meetings. So this amendment would remove that language.
Okay, clear. So I'm asking for, uh, a motion to approve second amendment.
Motion.
I need a second.
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed?
The trustee Pierce, oppose. Trustee Pierce, yeah, I oppose. I think meetings ought to stay open.
At the record show, trustee Pierce opposes. Any abstentions?
Um, just point of information, can I ask a question?
Go ahead.
Um, so does this mean that all the meetings would just be closed and the public cannot attend? Or they, will they still be able to attend online, virtually? Would it be on YouTube? Um, like, can you, can you dive further in that, since we're taking that open meetings thing off? You know, so to say?
Right. And so I'll, I'll defer tomorrow, because some of this occurred before I came on board. But the Open Meetings Act does include requirements that meetings be broadcast and that public be able to attend. Uh, my assumption is if we're not conducting committee meetings only under the requirements of the Open Meetings Act, then that would not be the case any longer. Mario is nodding in agreement.
So we've had a vote.
Um, I just, I got, oh, right. I was gonna abstain. That, but before I abstain, that's why I asked for point of information.
Okay. So are you, what's your, what's your vote, ma'am?
Abstain.
Okay. So we have one opposed, one abstaining, and, and the other seven or four that are, are on agreement with that? All right, so the amendment passes. Now we have to have a third vote. The third vote will be to vote for, uh, the item as it's amended. We're gonna vote for the item as it's amended. So may I have a motion to approve the item as amended? Motion, can I have a second, please? A second? All those, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed?
No, trustee Pierce.
Trustee Pierce.
Trustee, trustee Wilson is, um, is saying.
And trustee Wilson stands. So, uh, the item passes. Thank you. All righty. Item twenty-six, I think is probably our favorite item here. This has to do with consideration of awarding the title of chancellor emeritus to Dr. Stevensy Hitt. Can I have a motion for discussion? Have a second? A second? The floor is open for discussion on this item. And, you know, I'll start by saying, it's the least we could do. Uh, I don't know what else we could, we could have done. You know, we, I, I told them, I actually told Steve, Steve, which building do you want to be named after? You know, I mean, we could rename W.W. Thor and drive, but, you know, you know, no, don't do that. Uh, but all honesty, uh, you know, it's an honor. It's been an honor for me to serve you here and to serve this, this board and to serve this, this system. And you, your leadership has been exemplary. I, um, you know, we all make mistakes. But, you know, you, you, you own up and you keep going. And I've known, like I've said before here in this quorum, I, I think that, um, you know, I've known all, all of the chancellors from Thorn on through. And in my opinion, this is my opinion, Steve's been the best. Uh, each chancellor has its, has their own time, as the new chancellor will have and have their time to shine. But you have shined here. You have left your mark on this system uh, and on the lives of many people in your career, forty-year career here, Steve. And that's something to be proud of, and, and you should be proud of it. And, uh, I don't know what more I can say. Those are my comments. Any other trustees have comments? Trustee Sullivan?
Uh, yes, sir. Thank you. Um, pardon me. Thank you, Chair, for bringing this item to the board for consideration. And, um, it means a lot to me to serve with Steve. I met him in nineteen ninety-eight when I was looking for friends in Humble. He was, he was the, the chairman of the Humble Chamber of Commerce back then. And, uh, because he was president of Kingwood College. And I'll tell you, everybody knew him, everybody liked him. And I was told if you wanna run for office, if you wanna get involved in the community, you wanna do what you wanna do, go meet Steve. And we became fast friends. It's been nothing but, uh, a lot of fun every since. And I'd like to say that you're probably the reason I ran for this position on the board. Two reasons. One, you're the chancellor, and two, I graduated from Kingwood. Um, both are important to me. So, thank you.
Any other comments? Trustee Kane?
In a similar fashion, uh, through a mutual friend, Ray Lauder. Uh, met Steve many, many years ago and, uh, Met Steve many, many years ago and uh, i- in my capacity. I in the school district, I had the pleasure of working with Lone Star in in different ways and always admired. The manner in which you, Steve. Led Lone Star and uh. Have been delighted to have an opportunity. To work with you a- as a member of this board and and I will tell you that I think that. Your leadership is one of the reasons that Lone Star is what it is today. Which is one of the premier community colleges in the United States. So it's, it's been a true honor for me to to have worked with you in in several different capacities and thank you for all you've, you've done for Lone Star.
Thank you.
And for school districts as well.
Any other comments?
Um, Dr. Head, um, I think that um, I got, had a really good chance of um, seeing. What you did, you know, I came on in two thousand fifteen, I think you had already hired really good, great people. You already had laid out your um, uh, your approach, uh, you had, you're a great communicator. And so I, I. I know, thank you for your service, for your dedication from my community, for the region. Um, you know, I always say that sometimes they say be careful, make sure you're nice to people. Uh. Uh, you know, you may come across them, you know, I mean, somebody says be careful, don't be mean to people because it might be your boss someday. And I remember I met you um, um, when I was serving on Chamber of Commerce, I think it was Greenspan Chamber. And I think we were on um, Y M C A board, I believe.
That's correct.
Right, and on the tours.
Where they were asking us for money all the time, yes.
Well, well, he was there. He was, he was, he's, I said, I got a chance to sit next to him. And he treated me just like he did everybody else. I mean, he's um, and I think. Um, and that's, that's really who he is. Uh, you know, um, did, I know that I was, I'd be sitting here. Um, and as a, as a trustee for a college. But um, how you treat. Uh, a certain person, you know, you can judge people how they treat. You know, everybody, um, not, in, in that, you know, you, I think that's how you, that's, that's immediately. What I think I saw in you, you know, the way you interact with every employee. Whether it's, you know, custodian or or president. Uh, in the community, you, you value everybody's opinion and and you. Um, you create this energy in in groups like the the chamber or uh, Y M C A. And others see that and other, like myself, I think made my willingness to be part of that and seeing that you were. If you're willing to do it and you're a busy person and all that, that, you know, commit to that, even though they were taking, you know, they're asking you for money, we were, for money, for.
Personal money.
Especially, especially personal money and you still came to those meetings. To me, that says a lot, you know, especially in my part of the district, the region. Uh, you, you were present and uh, you're not going away. You, you left and, you know, your mark. Um, you'll continue to inspire and influence people wherever you are. And uh, and we'll find you when we need you. Well, thank you for your service.
Any other comments? Trustee Bishan?
I had not met Dr. Head. Until I just a a while before I decided to run for board and as you know, I've just, I'm, I'm the newbie. I've just been on the board since uh, December. My election was last November. But my good friend, Senator Brandon Creighton contacted me and said. Uh, it, it's time for you to step down off of Willis ISD Board. You've been on that board for twenty one years and it's time for you to. Um, to to look at Lone Star Board. And of course, I've, I've known about Lone Star College for a long time after serving on Willis ISD Board for so long and and. Admired Lone Star College because we, you know, we work closely with Lone Star College. And I had heard of Dr. Head and knew uh. What a great man he was and what a wonderful chancellor he was and just this, you know, Lone Star College is phenomenal. And um. After meeting him, I thought, oh. I just can't wait to work with him. I can't wait to work with this board and um, and then. I find out he's retiring. And I was very disappointed. Very disappointed.
Your being on the board didn't have anything to do with my decision, just like now. Clear about that.
So uh, but uh, just the short time I've got to be here with him and get to know him, just in a little short time. Um, he, he, you're phenomenal and he's a wonderful leader. And uh, I've learned, you know, I've learned some from him in this short time. And uh, I'm, I'm glad I I've gotten to spend some, some time with him. Um, and he's, these are big shoes that someone's got to fill that I do know. So um, but thank you for your leadership. I know all of you know him well. And you know what we're losing. So, but thank you. Thank you, Steve.
Mario?
Just wrote, I'll, I'll keep it simple, I promise. Um, Steve, it has been wonderful to work alongside you. Um, it's been a pleasure. Thank you for being the face of Lone Star. Um, it's. It's really an honor to be, to be honest with you. I've learned a lot. Uh, just by working alongside you and and to be honest, um. My boss and I, I work for, for a state representative, so, so anytime we would have to have any. Comments or issues regarding higher education or, you know, if we didn't understand something that went up to session, we turn to him right there. So he would always call you um, and be like, my boss would be like, hey, why don't you talk to Steve and see what he thinks about this? So he, he's been very instrumental in terms of higher education. Um, everyone knows him and just it's been an honor. Thank you, Steve.
Now, before we vote on that, sir, I'm not gonna let you off. Uh, on behalf of the board. We have a small gift. Remember, it's, where's our gift? Just a little token uh, to remember us by. Sorry. We shouldn't have, I know. No, yeah, thank you. I, 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 I've told everybody else, uh, we can't do this without all the people in this room, but. This starts with the board. You all know that every single item we've ever. Come to the board with was approved eventually. And that's because we've had, we have discussions sometimes, but. Um, with, the, I tell people all the time. So the strength of our system has been our board. That's where it starts. And then when the board. And we can work together, then we can hire great people and do, you know, it just kind of filters all the way down, all the way through the community. So. Uh, I was listening to your comments about going to graduation. I think that's really important that people see you and that you, you know, you see that, you see the same things we do. People smile. I told uh, trustee Sullivan that the. Bachelor's degree, every single person that came across that stage was smiling. It was like I saw two hundred people that came across or a hundred and fifty, whatever the number was that came across, they were all smiling, which is kind of a rarity actually, but just. It gives you a sense of uh, purpose for what we're, what we're doing. It really does. So we're doing a lot of great things. I, I know we impact. As many people as any other organization in the, in the entire region. So. I, I appreciate your comments and your support over the years. It's been uh, for the, for those of you out there. Uh, you probably think, well, you only see the board once, once a month. No, we talk all the time. And it's either on email or we're having lunch or uh, we're traveling in different places and talking to people in Austin or Washington or. Uh, locally. So I, listen, I appreciate the uh. I will say one thing though, some of you keep coming up to me and asking me if I'm okay. I am really okay. I am, uh, I am okay. I'm very proud of the work we've done. I am. And I think the college is in such great shape. That uh, and I know you have some angst about who the new person might be, but. We have such a solid infrastructure, the people out and and you all know what to do, you do. And then from a policy and a leadership issue. The board knows what needs to be done. So I, I think. We're one of the few colleges that I'm aware of that most of the, most of the people involved in the decision making are on the same page, which is uh. That's why we are Lone Star and uh, it's a, it's a good feeling. So. I'm looking forward to seeing the future success. I'm very optimistic about our future, by the way, very optimistic. So. We're in great shape. So I appreciate. Thank you and Chair Thomas. And we've had other multiple chairs up here. It's been, it's been really, it's been, I guarantee you, I've had the most interesting job. I don't know anybody else that had a more interesting job than me. It's been darn interesting. And you would agree with that. I know you would. And so would you, this chair. So uh, colleagues, uh, all those in favor of this item say aye. Aye. Any opposed? And the ayes have, congratulations, sir. Thank you, man. I need to backtrack just a little bit for item twenty. Uh, do I have a motion to discuss item twenty? A second, a second. Second. Um, trustee Sullivan, you want to, you want to make a statement, sir?
Yes, sir, I did. And I've got to kind of refocus now because that was, that was nice. I enjoyed it. The um, this item is just a contract, a new con, excuse me, contract with the new vendor for us. Which is going to be our external auditing firm going forward. It's a contract for five years, one point three point, one point three five million dollars. And I wanted to thank the current. External auditor, which is Weaver, who has done a good job for us. Uh, this was a difficult decision. The um, audit committee that interviewed all the vendors was trustee Kane, Chair Thomas and myself. And we had uh, good vendors that want to do business with Lone Star. They kind of dovetail, dovetails with what Dr. Head says with respect to having a good reputation, doing good work and people knowing who we are. It's nice to know that people want to do business with us too. It's another side of the college that a lot of people don't see. So I just wanted to thank everyone for their work that went into this.
Any other comments? All those in favor of this item signify by saying aye.
Aye, aye.
Any opposed? Item passes. Guess that exhaustes our, our consent agenda. Item twenty seven, we're going to discuss in close session. So with that, I guess we'll move on to the financial reports. And Jennifer, it's okay if you just stood up and said, you know. I'm just kidding. Going over this about four times today, I know.
I assume that means you've heard enough from me tonight. Which is fine. Uh, my, my shoes are, have had enough of standing up here as well. Uh, so I will keep this brief. Uh, because the financial report does reflect uh, what I went through earlier. Uh, right, so the, these are the financials for the month ending April thirtieth, twenty twenty three, for our current fiscal year twenty twenty three. Um, our expenditures, that they are about the same place they've been, uh, still continuing to. Track around the same percentages we've been in prior years at this point in the year. Oh, that was revenues. See, I'm already mentally onto the next slide. Uh, revenues is around the same percentage as been in prior years. Um, expenditures does also continue to trend a lower percentage than where we've been prior years. Uh, so not much here has changed from prior monthly reports. Uh, as of April thirtieth, we had spent two hundred and thirty nine million. And and these forecasts, these numbers reflect what was in the budget workshop presentation where this current year, we have had some variances. In our uh, revenues from what was budgeted, uh, coming in uh, lower on property taxes by three point three million. But coming in higher on our, some of our miscellaneous revenues, our investments, right, interest rates are higher. Uh, so that has really offset a lot of that. So you see, it's um, a net hundred thousand dollar difference in our revenues. And then on the expenditure side, I'm definitely feeling repetitive here each month that we have done, made the budget reduction for the sale of buildings nine and ten at University Park. Two additional items I do want to mention, uh, for the building and grounds report, I usually just say it's in your book. This time I wanted to bring some pictures. Um, definitely when we open a brand new building, there's ribbon cuttings and there's visits and people see those new buildings. And those are great events to attend, but I also want to highlight the repair and replacement work that we do. This picture here is a aerial photo, obviously at Montgomery. Thank you to Dr. Riley for sharing this. This is the brand new roof. On this building. Um, we have been on a string of replacing roofs. Uh, we've replaced the roof on uh, the community building here, I believe. Last summer and that was definitely disruptive to the employees. Um, yeah, and so uh, we should maybe start doing that for roof replacements because a lot of us are very excited to see these roofs uh, get replaced. But also mentioned that it can be disruptive during the process of replacing it. We're going through that now as well over at University Park. We had, we've already replaced the roofs on buildings twelve and thirteen and we are in the middle of replacing the roof on building eleven. Which we've also run into some snags and is currently disruptive to the employees uh, in that building. So I appreciate their patience. With us as we work through that. Um, but once it's completed, it's, it is a very exciting thing to have a brand new roof on. Our buildings as we continue to work through those. Um, so I'm going to look for more opportunities in the future to have pictures for the building and grounds report. Um, and then the last thing I, I do want to mention as well. Uh, Carlesia Wright and the Office of Culture and Engagement, uh, just yesterday had their first ever Business Opportunity Town Hall. Uh, which I, I was able to attend for a portion of it and it was the ballroom here in the community building and it was full. Uh, we had um. There was fifty three Lone Star College employees and sixty seven suppliers attended this event. Uh, for the first one and there, there was a panel and it was an opportunity for Lone Star College employees who. Do a lot of the work for purchases to meet vendors and vice versa, and for the vendors to also learn how they can do business with us. Um, so it sounds like it was a good event and just prior to this, uh, Ms. Wright was telling me that there was a thought from here that perhaps we have some additional vendor fairs. Uh, so we definitely want to continue to have this engagement with our vendors and um. And to mention too, we looked through like in, continuing to encourage hub vendors. We look back this fiscal year at some of our board agenda items and out of twenty four. Uh, unique solicitations that required board approval, fourteen of those we have been awarded to hub vendors. Uh, so the work is certainly not done. From here, we want to continue to grow additional events and uh. Find opportunities to continue to improve this engagement with our vendors. Thank you. That concludes my report.
Alrighty, thank you. Board of Trustees in accordance with section five five one dot zero zero one of the Texas Government Code. Will move into closed session under one or more of the following provisions. Section five five one zero seven one, zero seven two, zero seven four, zeros, seven six. We will go into closed session. Uh, you know, there's plenty of food out there, I think, still, it's still out there, does it, right? Professor, well, as mom would say, take some home with you. So we are, we will adjourn to, to closed session and be back after.